All rise. Oh, yes, oh, yes, oh, yes. This Honorable Commission is now in session pursuant to adjournment. May God bless this country and God bless this county. Mr. Chairman.
Our invocation this evening will be given by Commissioner Tim Jones.
Dear Jesus, thank you for this day. Thank you for this time together, Lord. Pray that you just be with us tonight as we do county business. Help cooler heads prevail. Help words to be listened to. Help emotions to be checked at the door, Lord. Just help us to do the good work for the citizens of this county. In your name we pray. Amen.
Would you remain standing, please, for the pledge?
I do. To the Constitution, to the flag, of the United States of America, and to the Republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Each commission will record your presence.
Did you get mine? Well, we recognize that Commissioner Harris is present, so we have twenty-two. We have twenty-two present this evening. Mr. Wright is homesick, and Commissioner Pomeroy is traveling with his business, so he will not be here this evening, so we have twenty-two. And of course, the two-thirds vote and the majority vote will remain the same. We have approval of the regular agenda tonight, but I want you to take note of the fact that number five under certificates will be pulled, and that will be given next month at the request of Commissioner Miller. And... I think that is all that we have changed on the agenda. Do I hear a motion? We have a... All right.
Ms. Chairman, so this is... I'd like to add, without objection, one item that I believe that we just had a... The Education Committee just had a special called meeting for, and this is to approve grant funding, state pass-through funding for the Summer Scholars Program. The total amount is 3.37 million, and then another 6.12 million. This is no local funding, no local match, to my understanding. We could... I defer to the Education Chairman, but it's no local funding. This is a state pass-through, and my understanding from speaking with Dr. Langford is that the reason this kind of came at the last minute was just because of timing of the budget appropriation approval at the state.
And I'm assuming you'll want that to be number eleven or on the consent agenda?
Number eleven, sir.
All right. You will add number eleven, then, the question from Board of Education.
Under budget.
Under budget.
Summer scholars.
That was two separate appropriations under that.
Okay. And that was... The Law Director reminds us that that'll be two separate appropriations, but hopefully our Budget Chairman will remind us of that at the time. All right. Do I have Commissioner Harris? Harrison?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I would like to add to the agenda under item E, under Committee on Committees. We have an unexpired term left by the resignation of Mr. Holcomb. I would like to add the name Former Commissioner Larry Hinton.
All right. Is there any objection to this? Pardon? Board?
What is the board?
Library Board.
Library Board. I apologize. Library Board.
Any objection? That will be then number one under C then. Do I have a motion? Mr. Becker?
Just real quick, and just to piggyback on what Chairman... Budget Chairman Shove mentioned. It is for two. The first, going back to the Summer Scholars, the Summer Scholars funding is for the 3.3 million, and then the transportation, it's not six million, it's 600,000. So just wanted to clarify that, but yeah, we can talk about it more when we get there. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Motion? Second? All in favor? Oppose, like, say? All right. Having an agenda, we will proceed with the consent agenda. Do I have a... A motion and a second? All in favor? Oppose, like, say? I like the way this is going so far, folks. Approval of minutes? All in favor? Oppose, like, say? And now we have certificate of recognition. This is the fun part of our commission meeting, and we have two people that'll be making these presentations. Commissioner Becker first, and Commissioner... Commissioner Wynn. I'm sorry. Commissioner Schmidt.
All right. Yeah, if y'all... The Ellis Middle School staff, admins, and students? Y'all can stand on either side here. All right. So we've got a nice celebration tonight. The Ellis Middle School, they took part in an organization called the Amazing Shake, and I want to read a little bit of what that is, and then I'll go into the certificates, and Commissioner Schmidt will also help me present. But the Amazing Shake is an etiquette and social skills competition originally created by the Ron Clark Academy, and it's been adapted across the country. The program challenges students in various social situations, emphasizing the manners, discipline, respect, and professional conduct. In preparation for the competition, Ellis students, they hone their skills in professional interactions, learning how to network, conduct successful interviews, hold authentic conversations, and remain composed under pressure. The goal was to equip them with tools to present themselves confidently in current and future opportunities. Ellis Middle School is proud to be the first school in Hendersonville and the first in Sumner County to fully participate in this competition. Engaging all students, there's 510 students there at Ellis Middle School. Additionally, 91 community volunteers helped to judge the students' performances. Commissioner Schmidt and I, the two of us were part of those 91, and we judged their performances. We provided valuable feedback and interaction, and there's actually consisted of three rounds. First round was called Work the Room. They allowed the students to network with members in the community, practice, you know, small talk, professional conversation. The top 100 students had advanced to round two, which was called the Circle of Doom. In this round, students sat in an inner circle while guests sat in the outer circle, asking a variety of questions on local, national, and global issues. After a one-minute response per question, the students rotated until the round was complete. The top 30 students then moved on to round three, which was called the Gauntlet, which was this past Friday. That was fun. Fun to participate and judge. I learned how to properly set a table about 30 times, so... But it featured a series of role-play scenarios designed to test their social skills, professional interactions. The students were scored based on their performance in each of those situations, with an overall winner chosen for each grade level. So we're here tonight to help celebrate that. Next year, Ellis is actually going to plan to continue the program and then also move on to the Ron Clark Academy to compete at the global competition next school year. So we... Commissioner Schmidt and I, we were extremely impressed with the program and what Dr. Whitaker and her staff there did to put this together, bringing in, like I said, 91 members throughout the community. And it was a great program and worthy of celebrating tonight. So I'm gonna... I've got... We've got one certificate for the staff and admin, and then Commissioner Schmidt has some certificates for the three student winners. But I'll start off here, and so the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners meeting in regular session on this 19th day of May 2025 does hereby honor to congratulate Dr. Heather Whitaker, the principal, Mrs. Caitlin Jennings, Assistant Principal, Mrs. Jenna Lee, the school counselor, Mr. Blair Bergner, school counselor, Mrs. Leah Tomlinson, instructional coach, for their excellent coordination and administration of the Amazing Shake program at Ellis Middle School. And I so move.
Motion and a second? All in favor? Oppose, like, say?
We're honored to be here tonight. This was a huge movement for us. We've been planning and implementing the house system from Ron Clark for the past few years, and this was something that we wanted to get to. And it was a huge undertaking, but we felt like it was important for our students to engage in this and learn how to interact with one another and make eye contact and engage and shake hands and talk about things that they weren't comfortable with doing. These three students were phenomenal. They blew us away, and honestly, we were surprised at who won. We had no idea who was going to end up with it, and we were just so proud of them. So I want to give them a big round of applause.
Commissioner Schmidt's got recognition for the three?
So before presenting these certificates, I just want to thank Principal Whitaker, the staff, the students, for letting me play a small part in this. It was a great experience. I know with the kids, it's very awkward for them, and they ought to be... All ought to be proud of their efforts, whether they're up here tonight or, you know, the other ones that participated. They all did a fantastic job. So the first certificate of recognition goes to Ashriel Hernandez, the sixth-grade winner. The... The second one goes to Jarn Mark Hammack, the seventh-grade winner. And the eighth-grade winner is Malaya Wilson. So needing here today, the Sumner... The Sumner County Board of County Commissioners meeting in regular session on this day, I hereby move.
Motion to group and approve. And second? All in favor? Oppose, like, say?
So unlike where they were during the competition, they have chosen not to speak tonight, but definitely, congratulations. You all did marvelous. It was very, very great program, and I look forward to helping out again next year. All right. Thank you.
Now, I do have one little complaint. This sounded like so much fun and so interesting. I don't know how... I'm in the Hawkins zone, but how I was not invited to this. You'll have to remember me now next year.
If you want to scoot in, you can. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. And next, Commissioner Baker Ring will make some awards in the school system, within the school system.
Okay. I've heard back from several of these people that they were not able to come. Tomorrow is exams at a lot of most elementary and middle schools, so I expect they're busy. Let me... I'm going to call this group first, or the Support Services, Support Staff, and we'll then we'll get... When they come up here, then I'll pass out their certificates, and we'll make a reservation. Charles Nathan Key, Sumner County Schools Support Services District Winner. Nope. And Dr. Langford has said he will forward these on to the people who were not able to be here. Lamar Totten, Sumner County Schools District Middle School Support Staff of the Year. Yeah. And just stay up here if you would, when you get up here. Donna Dyer, Sumner County Schools District High School Support Staff of the Year. Not here. Shelley Gifford, District Elementary School Support Staff of the Year. Jennifer Runyon, Central Office District Winner. Okay. And Sumner County Bus Driver of the Year, Chrisa Bullock. Not here. Okay. These will be forwarded, but Mr. Totten's up here. As somebody who taught at Sumner County Schools for 30 years, we couldn't... Teachers could not do their job without support staff. Support staff includes custodians and resource assistant... Teaching assistants of various types, cafeteria staff, bookkeepers. You can be the best teacher in the world, and if you don't have those people beside you and around you, you cannot do your job. So they're very important to the school system, and I have a resolution... I want to make a resolution that we honor and congratulate all of the Support Staff of the Year winners for Sumner County. I'll group and approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Now we have the teachers and principals of the year, and again, there... I had several spots that could not be here. We'll start with Norma Dam, who is the Supervisor of the Year. She is not here. She is retiring. So she may have already gone somewhere. Is that correct, Dr. Langford? She's... Oh, she's still here? But she is retiring this year? Okay. I thought she was. Okay. Mitch Flood is here, Sumner County Principal of the Year. Stay up here. Amanda Hogan, District Middle School Teacher of the Year. Nope. Susan Wheeler, Jennifer Brown Instructional Coach of the Year. Kristy Hughes Mercado, Sumner County High School Teacher of the Year. This is not here. She's from Gallup and High School. I've known Kristy for a very long time, and she's one of my constituents, and she does a wonderful job teaching Spanish. Shelby Johnson, Elementary School Teacher of the Year. Nope. Okay. And Kyle Gilliland, Assistant Principal of the Year, also not able to be here. So I appreciate Mr. Flood being here, and group and approve to recognize, honor, and congratulate all of the Sumner County Schools Principals and Teachers of the Year.
Say a second. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, like, say?
I do want to point out that both the Principal and the former Assistant Principal of the Year are former educators at Gallup and High School, so it's... Appreciate it. Thank you.
At this time, we have a proclamation by our county mayor.
Right. If we can get our guest to come up here, 4H. Bring everybody with you. All right. Come on right up here. All right. So it's my honor to designate June as National Dairy Month, and I'm going to read this proclamation. Whereas dairy farmers have contributed to the development and well-being of Sumner County, Tennessee, since its earliest formation of Sumner County. Whereas the dairy industry is a major industry in Sumner County, Tennessee, and a significant contribution to the economy of Sumner County. And whereas milk and dairy foods provide health benefits and valuable nutrients, and whereas real milk and dairy foods are superior to their imitations in quality, values, and taste. Whereas the June 25th, 2025 Celebration of National Dairy Month, highlighting the dairy industry, will occur in June of 2025. There... Now therefore, be it resolved by Sumner County Mayor John C. Isbell of Sumner County, Tennessee, that June 2025 is designated to the Celebration of National Dairy Month, and I call upon all government agencies and the people of Sumner County, Tennessee, in order to observe the month with appropriate programs and activities.
And likewise, this commission may want to join in. Mr. Mayor, would you be in favor of this? Oppose? I mean, second?
Hello. My name is Gracie Hawkins, and I am an upcoming junior at Portland High School. I am in DECA and FBLA at my school, and I serve as a student leader at my church. Being the 2025 4H June Dairy Month Chairperson means so much to me. My role as the June Dairy Month Chairperson is to spread the word of the importance of our dairy industry, and I'll do it by speaking at radios, radio interviews, PSAs, and going to different events. June Dairy Month is important because it shows the significance of the dairy industry, the work put into dairy farms, and the workers, and the nutritional benefits it has for so many. By the end of June, I'll have educated over 3,000 youth and adults on the dairy industry. If you would like me for an event, you can contact Michelle Sadler at UT Extension Office. Thank you.
All right. At this time, we have recognition of the public. If you will hand me that, please. Mr. Jim Latimer.
Jim Latimer, 1578 Latimer Lane, Hendersonville, Tennessee. First of all, let me start this out by thanking Mr. and Mrs. Brown for the great gift that they left to the county, not just for the present county, but for the future of the county, and we would like to acknowledge that. I would like to say that I'm happy that we're moving along in the preservation of this house as historic home, and I'd like to see that we will take advantage of this and go ahead and preserve a little bit of the past for the future of our region, our county, our state. So please take this into mind when you think about the house and put the funds in there for it. Thank you.
Kevin Baker.
Kevin Baker, 424 AB Wade Road. I also would like to thank the commission for moving this Brown project along in particular. Commissioner Klein, you've been unbelievable in your efforts to crawl under the house and explore. Who knows what hidden secrets that may bring? Who knows what the Latimers buried underneath that or whatever? I mean, this is an archaeological treasure, and we should take it as such. So thank you very much.
Mr. Mike McClard.
Mike McClard, 102 Tioga Trail, Hendersonville. I'd also like to thank the commission, the Budget Department for letting it go through, you guys for voting it, and Mr. Klein. I would not have crawled under that house, but thank you for going out there with the inspector. You know, as Mr. Jim said, you know, the Browns left an amazing gift to the county, and we should try to do the best that we can to honor them. There is going to be an ad hoc meeting Thursday at 5:30. Please come. I mean, the more you know about it, the more better decisions you can make. And thank you. you again.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Charlena Allmiller, I live at 143 Rule and Circle in Hendersonville. I just wanted to speak about the Sumner Scholars, and the Brown House, and the Library Board member. I, as the Sumner Scholars was added to the agenda, it brought me back to the first meeting that I watched of this commission, and how some grants that were passed through that were done at the last minute were held up, and I just want to say, three years later, it seems like we have, you have come a long way, because I do feel confident that the Sumner Scholars will probably pass since it's passed through, and there are so many kids that really need the Sumner Scholars, and the transportation that's associated with it. So I'm glad to see that three years is, we've come a long way as a county, and that is a tribute to you. When it comes to the Library Board, I have had a chance to watch a Library Board meeting from this past week, and it was actually in this chambers, because there were so many people that were interested in it in the county. I don't know Mr. Hinton, the previous commissioner, I only recognize his name because I've looked through some past commission meeting minutes, whenever I was looking for other things to do research. And, but I do know that he was at one of the Library Board meetings that was canceled, and he was friendly to people that it would, I think it would go a far way to gain trust of the public and gain trust of the libraries, if we could put people on there that have been on both sides, and it sounds like Mr. Hinton is one of those people since he's been a commissioner before. So I would hope that you guys would consider passing him today. And then as far as the Brown House, I'm glad to see that it's going forward, and I'm looking forward to seeing the ad hoc committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Director of Schools, Langford.
Scott Langford, 1260 12 Stones Crossing, Gilsonville, Tennessee. I'll go really fast, Mr. Becker's already said a lot of it. I really appreciate y'all considering, I know it spur of the moment, no one likes to do that. We literally got the money dropped in, you know, the state, state law says that we provide summer programming for students pre-K through 8 each summer. We don't get that actual funding until after the legislative session is done and the governor's budget is approved, so it dropped the week of May 2nd. My team worked fast to get it turned around so that we could have a special called meeting ahead of our board study session last week, and we got it over, so I really appreciate, I appreciate Mr. Schuff and Mr. Becker accommodating, letting us put up here tonight, because it's 2,100 students, 231 teachers, nine locations across the county. It's 3.38 million to cover the cost, because it's not just teachers, it's support staff, interventionists, counselors, you know, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, everything. It's a pretty comprehensive summer program, you know, but I really appreciate, it's a great program for our kids in the summer, it's great for our families, it keeps kids in school during the month of June, and so I'm really thankful for y'all taking that into account. It's 3.38 million for the camp, 612,000 for transportation, that is all state money, but it's, it's newly appropriated, so it has to have school board and commission approval, so I appreciate y'all. Helps us get everybody pay, you know, June, June is the end of our budget year, if we can get everything done, it makes the accounting much easier for everybody, so thank y'all for that consideration. And I'll close, Mr. Larry Hinton is one of the finest men that I've ever had the privilege to work with. I did not know him well until we served on the commission for eight years together, and there would be no libraries as we know them in Sumner County. Everything that's library-related in, in Sumner County has Mr. Hinton's fingerprints on it. It's been a labor of love for many years. The library in Millersville exists largely because of the work of Mr. Hinton in, in previous years, so I'm appreciative that he's up for library, and I would encourage you to consider him. So thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have a report of the chair. The Veterans Service Report is attached to your agenda. The financial statements are attached to your agenda. And at this time, we will have a hearing, public notice and hearing on Ramsey property at 109 Mini Storage, and our clerk will read this.
Sumner County Board of County Commissioners will hold a public hearing on May 19th, 2025, at 5:00 PM in the Bethel Brown Commission Chambers of the Sumner County Administration Building, located at 355 North Velveteer Drive, Gallatin, Tennessee. Ramsey 109 Mini Storage PUD rezoning. James Ramsey, represented by Green LID Design, 7th Commission Voting District Danny Sullivan, applicant is seeking to rezone subject property from rural residential to planned unit development PUD for the purpose of constructing and operating a mini storage facility. Subject property is located at Highway 109 North, Gallatin, Tennessee. 37066 is tax map 104, parcel 005.02, contains 2.61 acres, and is zoned rural residential. The Sumner County Regional Planning Commission forwarded a positive recommendation related to this item on March 18th, 2025. Copy of this notice is on file at the Sumner County Planning and Engineering Department in the Sumner County Administration Building, located at 355 North Velveteer Drive, Gallatin, Tennessee. Anyone having any interest, desiring to ask questions concerning this request, is invited to attend this meeting or call 615-451-6097. Persons wishing to speak on agenda items shall sign up for public comment on the sheet provided at the meeting immediately prior to the commencement of the meeting.
Okay, we did not have anyone signed up to speak, but I will ask if there's anyone here who desires to speak on this topic.
Andy Leith, 114B, West Main Street, Gallatin, Tennessee, and I do represent the owner of this project. Just wanted to explain to the commission tonight a few things about the project. We did have this on your agenda a year and a half or so ago, Josh can correct me on that, it was voted down. We brought it back after the time allotted for us to reintroduce the request to you all. After looking at the project, the properties surrounding this, to the north, zone commercial PUD. Property touching us to the south is zone commercial PUD. Property across the street, across 109 to the west is zone commercial PUD and CS, Commercial Services. We've got the CSX Railroad behind us, and so you've got a rural residential zone property in the middle of commercial properties with a railroad behind it. So we feel like it's fitting and the best use for this property to go, it can be also a commercial pud. Our pud has got as many storage. I know traffic has been brought up, mini storage is the least traffic generator we can have. We are producing three peak hour traffic, three peak hour trips in the, in the AM hour and six peak hour trips in the PM hour. We can't get much less traffic than that, having it in mini storage. So we feel like this is a good use for the property, commercial, tax base, no rooftops, and willing, request your vote for approval tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this before we close the hearing? Close, hearing is closed, and we will take a vote at this time to approve the rezoning of Ramsey 109 Mini Storage.
I may be out of order, if I am, I'm sure you'll let me know.
You're never out of order, go ahead.
Thanks.
Just sometimes we're better in order, I guess. If we don't mind, I'd like to suspend the rules and have Mr. Sutheth come up and help me understand where this property is, just for myself, because I'm, I'm kind of confused.
Would it be helpful if I put up the presentation up there, so you can see the map and that kind of thing?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, I, I don't think, is this the one near Rogers Road?
No, sir, no, 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 sir. So this is, this is on New 109, north of Gallatin, so trying to think, there's, there's another mini storage PUD that, that we've had some discussion about recently across the street from it. Actually, I could show you better than tell you, it's just north of the city limits of Gallatin. Right now, it's not really near much of anything, to be honest with you, but it's, it's surrounded by some property that was rezoned by this body back in 2018, so there's a significant commercial planning and development all around it, basically, and there's, there's one little parcel in the middle that belongs to, to these folks that wasn't a part of that planned unit development, so they're seeking to rezone this one parcel to give it the same zoning as the rest of the property around it.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, is this just north of the intersection of Scotty Parker and probably 109?
Yes, yes, sir, it's north of there, yes, sir.
I've heard all I need to hear from him, I've been willing to make an argument, just like I did two years ago.
Okay. Any further discussion on this? Do you have anything else you'd like to say?
I do, Mr. Chairman, I, I guess it never hurts to keep trying until you get the answer you're looking for, but I, sorry, I don't, I'll, I'll make a motion to discuss, so we can at least get it on the floor.
Motion to discuss, a second, all right, go ahead.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, like I said, I guess it never hurts really to keep asking until you get the answer you're looking for. I stand here tonight, just the same as I did almost two years ago. There's deer constantly being run over, up and down 109, there's people having wrecks right here in this very spot. If you go, if you come out of North Water, and you turn, go to turn right on Highway 109 North, you've got to go north, cut into a turning lane, across the fast lane of traffic, to come back southbound on Highway 109. I, just as I said two years ago, this is wrong. I, I can't support it, I can't support the development. As, as I said two years ago, if my, my recall is correct, almost every other day, there's a dead deer laying in this part of the roadway through there. I, I can't support it. We're pushing the wildlife out of the way, that's making a dangerous intersection there for the, for the, for people that travel that road every day, such as myself. I, I can't support putting it in there, and I, and I appreciate that it's only six cars in one time of the day, and three cars in the other time of the day, but it's dangerous enough traveling that road every day with the traffic that we have, much less putting another turning lane and, and more traffic in there. So with that, I ask that the commission stand beside the vote they did two years ago and vote no.
For the chair's information, Commissioner Rogers, it'll make a difference to a lot of people in the room, I know, is, is this particular rezoning in your district?
No, sir, it's not, and I would, I'm, I'm glad to say that we, we try to protect the wildlife in our area, and that's why we have the five acre minimums in, in the county of, of the 5th district, but this is not in my area, it's in another commissioner's area, obviously, but I, I just can't support something that's already pushing wildlife out of its habitat, and we have a municipality within the county that has a board, another layer of government, to govern four-legged deer, when it's the human pushing them out of their residence of, of the woods, and that's exactly what we're going to do here, and congest more traffic. It's, I can't support it.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Miller.
I voted no for this a year and a half ago when we voted on it, and I voted no again when it came before us in the planning commission. Nothing's changed from a year and a half ago. You know, I agree with Commissioner Rogers, it's not just the wildlife, it's a very, very dangerous intersection. You'd have to basically, like he said, kind of come back up and back around, there's, they're not willing to make the infr, infrastructure there where people can come in and out, and I didn't support it the last time, I'm not going to support it this time, and I think we need to stick to our guns on this.
Commissioner Becker.
Yeah, my, my question may have just been answered, but I, I'm going to ask it anyway. What has changed now versus when we, when it got voted down last time? Is it, if it's okay, if I can ask to suspend the rules to, has Mr. Sutheth?
Without objection, go ahead.
Well, the zoning code was updated about a year ago, pretty comprehensively, for most of the county, it didn't, didn't impact this part of the county, though, and so the, the zoning that was in place a couple of years ago, when this was first heard, it's, it's still in place today. So the only thing that's really changed is in the zoning code, I think there's a, it's a one-year, they have a one-year delay essentially, if they get denied, they can't come back for another year essentially, and so enough time has elapsed that they have a right to come back to the planning commission and the county commission for a, a new request. Sir.
Is that all, Commissioner Becker?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Sullivan.
Mr. Chairman, this is in District 7, this is in, at the, at the border of my district, going up the 109 bypass. I don't think a lot's changed, it, it did go through planning again, I think it had one negative vote, and that was Commissioner Miller. Commissioner Rogers brought up a point about a year and a half ago, that this was in wetlands. This is not in wetlands, and Mr. Sutheth, can you address that?
No, sir, it's not in wetland, it's, it's on the side of a hill.
So, I mean, I hate that maybe a deer might get run over, but this is this gentleman's land, everything around it is zoned, what he's trying to go to, so I, I, I'm going to support this, and I would ask for you to support this landowner in, in doing this. I don't think it's going to bring a lot of extra traffic. Thank you.
Commissioner Ring.
Thank you, sir, I have a couple of questions for Mr. Sutheth. One is, this is how many acres?
2.61 acres.
2.61 acres, and it's currently a rural residential. If they decide to go with something that's already in the zoning, what, what could they put in there?
That's kind of an eleven for the planning commission, because what they're allowed to do by right in this location. So again, it's, it's got commercial property.
To the north, commercial property to the south, railroad to the east, the state highway to the west, two acres in the middle of all that. They have a right to build a house there, and so it's surrounded by property that's approved by this body to be a commercial development, essentially, and they have the right to put a house there. And so it's probably not a feasible use of the property to put a home at this location, to be honest with you, but that's about all they have the right to do under the current law.
Thank you, that's what I thought. If I can speak to this, it's in the middle of commercial.
There are low houses, jointed.
This seems to be a reasonable use of that property, and again, storage units don't require a lot of traffic in and out, so I, I'm, I'm supporting this, because I think it's a reasonable use for this property. Thank you.
Commissioner Schuff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I voted against this last time, I don't know that I realized that it, that it was surrounded by commercial property. I'm not sure that changes my thought, I don't, not sure it changes my vote, but it, it at least makes me consider a change. What are, I would be interested in, Mr. Sutheth, in anybody who has, I, I'm not super familiar with this area, full disclosure, I, I don't travel it that often, so I, on the one hand, I have a lot of sympathy for the property owner here, because I think they're in a tight spot, and I would not, I would probably do something very similar to what they're trying to do if I owned that property. On the other hand, I, I don't traverse that area a lot, and so I, I also want to defer to people who, like my fellow commissioner, who does traverse the area a lot. So I, I would be interested in understanding what the, what Mr. Sutheth?
.......................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a traffic cut basically that we're going to require directly in front of this. And so again, I could probably show you better than I can explain this to you if I could put it up on the screen. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Alright, so this is, this is the subject property here. You can see with the red there, there's a, the light blue that's all around it is the, is an approved commercial planning and development that's, that's in place today. The owner of that property is here tonight, I believe. And then the subject property is that small two-acre piece that you see, two-point-three-acre piece, two-point-six acre. And then there's another storage facility across the street, across 109. And so, as I mentioned, one of the things, if you see here, there's a, there's a, if I can zoom in a little bit here. So there's a, one of the conditions that we added is that this median crossover, that's what I'm trying to, that's the term I'm trying to find. We, there is a required median crossover that has to be constructed as part of this project.
And that would be formed by the...
Yes, yes, yeah, and so that, so, so that, what's in the resolution is that they either have to do that or they basically got to sit on the property until it develops. And there's a north-south connection, if you can see this right here, to the property, to the north and the south. When that develops at some point, it will be able to connect. But if they want to, if they want to go ahead and build this, they've got to construct a median crossover. And so that was a condition that the planning commission discussed. And again, it's in the resolution before the body here tonight. And so there wouldn't be a situation where they're going to be making U-turns. That was a concern that we had, that the county engineer had, is making U-turns to get back to the facility and that kind of thing. If you're, you know, if you're coming down from Portland, you'd have to essentially go all the way to the south and then turn back around and come up to the north. And so we tried to require this to be incorporated to prevent that.
Okay, Commissioner Jones, do you have a question of him? Okay.
Thank you. How close is this to the, the new development called the Meadows? It was said that this is all commercial all the way around this, but can you show that on a map?
Yes, yes, sir. So it's one of those things that it's so close yet so far away, basically, the, the...
Railroad tracks. So this, this, and I wish I had my laser pointer, but this gray area up here is the Meadows development. And so their CSX railroad line splits these two. And so there's no connectivity at all, at this time anyway, between this and this. And so between the, the...
There's no, no access to get to there?
Not at this time. Now someday there may be, they may eventually find a way to build something, some new connection or something like that, but at this time, there's no connection.
And what is... North of this subject property, what is it?
It's, it's, it's called Highway 109 PUD that was approved. I said it was in twenty eighteen, but it was actually twenty seventeen.
But what is it?
It, it's a, it's a relatively large commercial development with a mix of uses that are approved there. It hasn't been able to take place yet. We talked about this at the planning commission. There's no public sewer available there at this time. Well, no, we do, we, yeah, we do. It's a, it's, this is the plan sheet right here. It's a, it's a mix of uses. They vary from, you know, retail to smaller convenience, gas station-type items and that kind of thing. But it's a, it's a mix of uses. Nobody's really made a serious effort, effort at it this time, as I mentioned, because there's no public sewer available because it's on the other side of the railroad tracks.
So currently, that's all good area right now along this subject property?
Yes.
On there. Thank you. So, so approval of this would start mowing down the trees in that area?
In, in, in order for the property owner to be able to build what they want to, they would have to take down the trees.
Any, is there any plans on the horizon for that PUD to the north? Like on the horizon, have they talked about it?
Not within the county, not within the county. I, I don't know if they've had any conversations with the city about potentially annexing at some point in the future or anything like that. The, 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 the way they're going to get sewer at that location is going to be something, but...
For Galatin to annex them? Thank you.
Commissioner Lambeth, do you have a question of Mr. Suddeth?
I just need to confirm two things. Real quick, Mr. Suddeth, so the slide before that, I'm, I'm looking, the light blue is already approved, so they could break ground tomorrow if they wanted to, correct?
Provided they could have the water and sewer services that they need, yes, sir. It's, it's, the zoning is there in place at this time, they would need to file a site plan in order to build buildings.
Okay, and then everything on the next slide that you showed us is what's going into the light blue?
That's what's approved, yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I needed, thank you.
Commissioner Miller, you have a question or Miss?
I don't have a question, I just have two points. The first point is, this property was purchased as rural residential, and that's the way it stands, and we do not have to approve this because it is an ask. And the second thing is, I actually read this during the meeting, and it was an article in the Tennessean called "The Danger of Highway 109." Since 2019, the Tennessee Department of Safety and Homeland Security has documented 1,625 wrecks on State Route 109. Nine of those crashes involved a fatality and thirty-eight serious injuries. This is just going to exasperate that.
Thank you. Commissioner Wynn, is this, you have a question?
Yeah, for Mr. Suddeth. So, and this may be an obvious question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. So whether this land is developed for commercial use or say it was, it was, a house was built on it, would the trees have to come off for either case? I mean, there's going to be clearing of that land, whether it's what's built on there. Is that an accurate assumption?
Right, right. If, if, if the county, if there's any property ever correctly, they'll put that all tree, that's not something that we regularly plan by now.
Well, it's any context.
I got you, okay. Yeah, I was just, I was thinking that through, and I was like, well, you know, the, the fact that the... To me, it's like if they decided to put a house on that, which they could do, I guess, tomorrow if they wanted to, those trees would come down. So I just, okay, I just wanted to make sure I was, I was thinking clearly. Thank you, Mr. Suddeth.
Commissioner Brennan?
Mr. Suddeth, I'm, I'm a little confused here because I saw what you had on the... Go back to the one that's light blue and everything?
Oh, yes, sir, I'm sorry, I'm going in the wrong direction.
Okay, so, that one, and then go back to the other one in just a minute. That right there looks, you know, you said those are the PUDs north and south of the, the one in question?
Yes, sir.
Is that development, or is it still woods?
So, so it's something that got approved back in twenty seventeen?
Yeah, but they just hadn't done it.
It has yet to move forward, any construction at all.
Okay, so that's just what they were planning to do, but it hadn't taken place?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Teichner?
We've talked a lot, I just want to bring us back to the wonderful statement that my fellow commissioner from the, Commissioner Rogers stated. I mean, one principle, we all voted against it before, nothing's changed. I don't know why we would change our vote. Wrong was wrong then, wrong should be wrong now, just don't think it's changed as of calendar year.
Commissioner Janong?
I have a question for Mr. Suddeth, please.
Go ahead.
You said that the other two would have to get sewer and all that there. So this is a storage area, well, if they have an office there, will they not have to have a bathroom?
They, they... They would potentially if there was an office, but they're not proposing to have an office at the location.
It's just little...
It'd be an unmanned with a gate kind of a situation is, is what would be proposed. Potentially, it could be on a septic system, but I don't think that, I don't think it would work with their building layout, so... They, they would need water for, for landscaping, and they have a letter from the, the City of Galatin showing it as available.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no one else in the queue, I would ask if there is a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, seconds.
A motion and a second. I'll ask that this be placed on the board.
Each commissioner records your vote.
It looks like the motion, I think, would fail because it did not get twelve votes. It got a majority of the votes, but it did not get a majority of the votes. So that has failed. Thank you. Alright, on your desk is a copy of the report of the committee that I appointed to protect children. I understand they had, I know they met several times, really good meetings, and I just want you to have a copy of their thoughts and recommendations. And at the request of Commissioner Wes Wynn, I will also forward a copy of this to the superintendent of schools and to the members of the Sumner County Board of Education.
Mr. Chairman, pause, I don't think I have that now.
It's on your desk, look on, in the loose, in the packet. Alright, now we'll have the reports of the county officials. We have the written reports of those in your packet, and also at this time, we will vote on the notaries. And I'll ask the clerk to place that on the board.
Each commissioner records your vote.
That receives a unanimous vote of twenty-two of those people present, and that passes. We will now have reports of standing committees, health and emergency services. Education Committee?
Yes, Education Committee met earlier this after, earlier this evening. We already added the, the summer scholars, the camp funding and the summer scholars' transportation to the budget agenda, so that's good. I just wanted to also just call out to the commission here that I, this afternoon, I forwarded information Dr. Langford had sent to us, his, his May education report. Included in that are updates on the athletic and a couple of school facilities, how they're, how they are progressing. And also in that, there's a link where you can see a video, they used a drone to, to fly over each of the, I think, five areas. So I thought it was pretty neat, I just wanted to make sure you all saw that if you were interested, so thank you.
Thank you. Highway Committee?
We did not have a meeting again this month, so no report, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, General Operations Committee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will gleefully kick off the next hour of debate on twenty-five oh five dash zero eight to approve the Millersville EMS station MOU, and I so move.
Alright, there is a motion and a second. Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So in an effort to try to get a consensus on this, on this MOU, I've been talking to one of the city commissioners of Millersville, and I've got a few amendments that I'd like to make to the MOU. Particularly number two. Give everybody a second to get there. Do you have it, Mr. Law Director? So where it says the county agrees to make all necessary upgrades to the facility's sleeping quarters, I want to insert "and/or any work necessary to make those sleeping quarters code compliant", and then pick up where it finishes as agreed upon by the city, "which shall be in compliance with the city codes and suitable for use as an EMT station. Said improvements pursuant to this paragraph shall be made at the county's expense." So again, inserting "and/or any work necessary to make those sleeping quarters code compliant". There was some concern with passage of this as it stood, so I wanted to clarify that a little bit. In case work needed to break outside of that room for things that would make that room code compliant, this addressed that need, so...
Our motion and a second to accept that amendment, and...
I, I've got more, but if you're going to take them one at a time...
Well, let's take them one at a time.
That's probably best, that's fine.
Any discussion particularly on that amendment? Commissioner Boyd?
So my question would be with that, I have been in that facility, and there's storage space over that sleeping quarters and there's stairwells. I'm just wondering how much that can grow as far as code compliant? Because I could see that that's probably a bad idea to have storage over it, so are we going to pay for storage somewhere else? I, I just...
Yeah, so I can address that, Mr. Chairman. Part of our architecture description addresses that, that there could be no storage on there to make it code compliant. That's something that Millersville would have to come up with a way to store items safer, because we would have to put a one-hour fire ceiling in there, and it's not supportive of storing things on top of it. So that is written up in there, that they would have to remove that. We, we do address that.
So...
And the architecture papers that we've got drawn up, if, if...
So you're saying that is not possible, that, that would not meet code?
The way it is presently, there, they have stuff stored on top of it, but our proposed plan, the architect, addresses that, and part of making it codes compliant would be for them to find another place to store things on top, to make it rated for fire. So it's just a matter of getting the stuff off of the roof of the room. But it is addressed and, and will be addressed in the plan part of that.
We're speaking to this amendment. Commissioner Klein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, the, the proposal by the crossroads architecture specifically addresses about eleven different points, that being one of them. The reason that the wording, I think, why, why Commissioner Jones is going after this wording is because there are things outside the actual envelope of these living quarters that, that may require addressing for code compliance. The, the ceiling or the storage above the ceiling is one of them. That's not within the, the sleeping quarters, but it would be required to create a one-hour firewall all the way up to the, to the roof of the building. And there are, there are several things in the, in the proposal by the architect. For instance, there's an R-13 fire suppression system required specifically in those living court, or those sleeping quarters. There may be required to be a pump and a, a small pressure tank. Those would not be in the sleeping quarters. So when, when, I forget what the wording is, I think I got it. Any or, and/or any work required for code compliance or something to that effect, there, there are possibly things outside of those sleeping quarters that would have to be addressed, but not, seriously not the entire building. We would not need to change, we wouldn't need to put fire sprinklers in the entire building. That, that's not part of it, because the, the rating of that building is such that it would not require it. So anyway, the, what I wanted to point out is that the architect's proposal addresses all of these things. He spent quite a bit of time with the fire, the state fire marshal, and he obviously knows the International Building Code since he is an AIA architect. So I just wanted, for the commission, I wanted to clarify that.
Okay, now, I'm not at this, go ahead, Commissioner.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
I thought you were finished, go ahead. I thought you were finished, go ahead.
I was just gonna address, so the, the wording that I came up with here was specific to the issues that he had with, he wanted this to be a one-and-done type MOU, and, and once we got something going, he didn't want to have to stop anything because it broke outside the envelope of that room. So he and I thought that this wording may work well to make it limited to the room, but if things were outside the room that worked with that room, that would take care of that. That was, that was the point of, and the wording was specifically "and/or any work necessary to make those sleeping quarters code compliant," plain and simple.
All right, we have his amendment before us, and before we do vote, and I'm not trying to spark a lot of additional debate, but if, if there is any clarity that you need, now is the time to ask that. Otherwise, we will vote on this amendment, and he has others that he would like to present. Commissioner Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So the very next statement in this is, talks about compliance to city codes. It, it seems like we're being a little duplicit in including, we have to be, everything has to be up to code within the amendment. So I'm, I'm a little confused as to why we need to state that twice. But what I'd like to do, Mr. Chairman, is make an amendment, or actually just, I'd like to refer this back to committee. As I was looking at this today, scratching my head, and I, I couldn't understand and figure out why General Ops was, was handling this and why EMS or Health Emergency Services Committee, why they weren't the body that was, that had reviewed this and was bringing a proposal forward. You know, General Ops is for county-owned properties, non-school properties, and this isn't even our property. It has nothing to do with the county, and this is all emergency services. So I think we need to, to refer this over to our Health Emergency Services Committee, have them evaluate that, and, and come forth with a recommendation that's specific to Health Emergency Services.
Okay, so you're making an amendment to refer this to what committee?
Health Emergency Services.
Health and Emergency Services, and it did get a second from Commissioner Becker. We, we will have to get rid of this amendment first, so we'll either have to vote this up or down before we take up this amendment. So do you have anything else to offer on this amendment?
No, I was gonna speak specifically to that, so I'll, I'll hold, I guess, on that. I was gonna explain why we didn't need to do that, but if you wanna wait for that, I can.
Okay. All right, this is Commissioner, if you, oh, Commissioner Mansfield?
Point of, I guess, information. Commissioner Nguyen, was that a motion to refer or defer?
Defer, okay.
So, parliamentarily, I think, I mean, not trying to, I think that we'd have to dispose of that amendment first. I mean, I, I don't, he just made an amendment, we have to dispose of that.
You're right, if it's a defer, we would have to dispose of that first, so...
But I do wanna speak to that.
Okay, go ahead.
I guess...
It is with debate.
Yes, sir. I guess, I'm not sure why it's confusing, but one, I'll remind the body that we approved this unanimously, a MOU that's in this packet as well back in August, just to get this done, and the fact that we're still here is just ridiculous and beyond my understanding and comprehension. I'll also add that the General Operations Committee, as far as our standing rules specifically says, it's for maintenance, dues and responsibilities are also for maintenance, construction, improvement of necessary facilities. This is a necessary facility, so, I mean, this, this is a, a necessary facility regardless if it's county-owned or not. It doesn't say that explicitly to here because of the grammar, the structure of the sentence, Mr. Chairman. So I'll also say that according to the construction and renovation of county-owned buildings, including any leasehold improvements policy that we passed, that the legislative body designated is General Operations Committee for this task. I really don't care if the Beer Board does this MOU, it don't make a difference to me. I, I don't see any reason to delay, because one more month of delay is more month, one more month of wasted money on this trailer that we already wasted $35,000 on for no reason, that we're gonna continue to burn money for, for no reason. That we're here has been publicly noticed, there's no reason not to debate this night, make amendments, make changes, whatever you want to, use what Millersville presented, go back to the original one from August 2024, I don't really care. But I think we need to do something tonight and quit kicking this can down the road. We hear this lectured all the time, kicking the can down the road, kicking, well, we're kicking the can down the road for no reason. I think Commissioner Jones's amendments are amenable. Obviously, he's been in discussion with a Millersville City Commissioner who's agreeable to these amendments. I don't see any reason to delay, especially as he's been working with a representative outside of the process to try to one-on-one resolve this issue tonight, because they all agree that they want this done. And in fact, I'll, I'll read an email from one of the city commissioners from September 2024 briefly, who is now a, got elected in November, but before he got elected, he sent this to Mayor Isabel and the Millersville City Commission, asking basically for them to work together to take the necessary steps from Millersville to pass the MOU that we passed in August, no changes, so that Sumner County can make updates to the fire hall in Bethel Road. Furthermore, he said that Millersville, for Millersville, Sumner County is offering to make the changes needed to the fire hall so that EMS can return sleeping inside of the building. I don't want to turn down free repairs for Millersville residents. And that's from a sitting Millersville City Commissioner, he made this as a comment as a citizen, it's known, September the 18th, 2024, of agreeing to the original MOU we passed. So again, it's ridiculous to kick this can down the road. They've been saying, "Don't kick that can down the road." I'm saying, "Don't kick this can down the road." There's no reason to kick it back to another committee. If you wanna make changes, make them tonight. But I'm fully supportive of Commissioner Jones's amendments. We gotta be here all night to do it, let's just get it done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Sho.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, you know, I can be convinced of change. I was, I think, earlier on a, on a rezoning, because I learned new information. In this case, I, I tend to agree with my fellow commissioner here, that as of now, we're spending money, and we're gonna continue to do that on a temporary residence until we get this fixed. My preference would have been for the city of Millersville to, to make these changes, right? I mean, that, to me, that feels like there would have been a better path for the city of Millersville to pony up these changes, because it's their building. However, we, you know, and if there's some information out there that they're willing to do that, then I might be willing to defer it in that case, but I've heard no such information. And to that point, you know, we've, we have on occasion helped, I think I made this comment in, in Budget Committee, that we have on occasion, on many occasions, we will provide assistance in some way, shape, or form to various cities. I was for providing ARPA funds routed through the county for sewage for Hendersonville. And to me, this is, this is that, and it's, I don't think it's a large amount of funding. So unless there's any new information to be had on this, we're burning funding now, and I think this is a more permanent solution, so unless I hear anything new, I'm gonna be against deferral.
Commissioner Teichner?
Mr. Chairman, I, I wanna encourage this commission to do something that we haven't been doing as an overall body. I believe that there's a time for principle, and I think we haven't seen a lot of it overall. We're all gonna vote the way we vote, not gonna try to sway anybody's vote, but I find it maddening that we will have something go through the committee process with such due diligence that has gone through this General Ops Committee. You know, a lot of work, a lot of effort, and then we, it can be any of us, it's not picking on one commissioner, but we will wanna send it back to another committee, and then we'll talk long enough that we might wind up having 10 ad-hoc's before we're finished. But then ultimately, we've got another motion that was already put on here to bring something that completely bypasses the committee that's been bypassed all, for a whole year, committee on committees. And I just find it so alarming that in one way, something we've already passed, a really close version of, I believe unanimously, we pass it and we run through and we say, "You know what, let's over-regulate this, let's over-commit it," even though it's already had all kinds of due diligence done on it. But let's bypass something as important as like the library board, and just don't, just blow straight past the committee on committees that we all, yourself included, all of us, put into power. You were even on that committee, and I just find it very alarming that we can't stand on principle alone, whether it's as far right or as far left, that's beside the point. But we should just be able to stand on principle, vote something up or down, instead of being so many narratives that go on. It's gotta be maddening to the people who watch. I see the chambers full, I see them empty. It's gotta be maddening to, no matter what side somebody's on, we can't stand on principle and vote through something, because we are legislators, and we were voted in to represent the people. We are not representing even our own values, because we don't know what they are. I just, I just find it alarming. I challenge this committee, this commission, to stand up on what you believe in, however shaky that ground may be, or however rock-solid it may be. Stand on it.
Commissioner Boyt?
Email that we received today from a city commissioner in Millersville, Mr. Darnell, he sent us all an email, and he has several items in it that he brings forward, and I understand that my fellow commissioner has spoken with some of their city commissioners. I don't understand why this MOU wasn't worked out before we hit the floor tonight. I understand, I, I got this, I understand it was, but I've got this email here, and Mr. Darnell is asking that we have 30-day agreement. I don't know if that means I'm gonna put $50,000 into windows and then they're gonna kick us out in 30 days. I know that there was some talk that they wanted, I was in a meeting, I'm, I'm gonna finish, if you wanna wait. I was in a meeting listening to them, and they, they talked about that they want that for their firemen, and I understand they do, and I, I don't know how much I'm gonna invest $50,000 and they're gonna negotiate. I understand that, when I read the MOU that I'm looking at tonight, and it says that, it talks about good faith and negotiation, I don't want to enter a commitment...
Point of order, Mr. Chairman, this is...
If I don't see the MOU. So I would be in favor of sending this back for more work, and yes, I do believe our standing rules clearly says it goes back to health and emergency management. I don't want additional work. What I'd like to see before me when I come to this commission is a full work. I want an MOU that's agreed upon by them. I don't want to see a city commissioner over there telling me that they have so many requirements that they're meeting on tonight to negotiate. I want their work done, I want our work done, and then when it comes here, we can all see what they've agreed upon, not, well, they've had a conversation. I'd like to see it in their MOU that they're presenting to us, and then we go forward. So I would be in support of sending this back for more work.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just to add a little bit more color to my comments earlier, you know, in conversations with Millersville City Commissioners, they're looking to take this space over, at least what we're talking about for our EMS, in 12 to 24 months. So this is a short-term solution for us, you know, and then also in talking with the, the city commissioners, they're also looking to pay for the codes corrections for this space for their fire department. They, they want to do that. So they're exploring those avenues right now, tonight. They've got a budget meeting that they are going through, a workshop that they're going through to, to figure that out. I don't think that we're 100% aligned with the city of Millersville. I don't think that we fully understand what their intentions are, what their goals are, and how we, how we can work together in coming up with a solid solution that's long-term and best for both Millersville and Sumner County.
Right. I, I would like for us to keep our debate. I think Commissioner Jones is, is correct in, in his point that you can always say, "Well, this relates to the deferral because of everybody that's in the queue, let's narrow this to the deferral issue."
Yes, that, that's the reason for the deferral, was to let's send it back to the right committee, we'll get the right conversations and align on those goals and the needs of both departments, our EMS along with their, their fire department, and we'll figure out a path way forward. I'm, I'm with Commissioner Boyt, you know, whenever we get here to have an MOU that, that, you know, we've seen a lot of back and forth on emails, and it's like, we're gonna put together an MOU, whatever we put together tonight, we'll go to, to Millersville, it'll be kicked around, I'm sure we'll kick it back next month, because they'll have some edits or, or some concerns. So we, we just wanna get, try to get ahead of that. If, you know, if we can get everybody in the same room and working together, that would be ideal. But like, right now, I mean, we're legitimately looking at 24 months is would be the max, we'll get out of $50,000. When I, I look at our expenses even from a dollar perspective, you know, this rental is costing us, what, 30, 35,000 a year? We're, we're not saving a tremendous amount of money, and then we're honestly gonna be right back where we are today, trying to figure out a solution for our EMS personnel and, and sleeping quarters. So my preference would be to, to figure this path out forward with Millersville, on how we can work together and complement each other, what synergies that we can align on in this project, and I don't think we've done that. I think that we've had one idea as to what we need, and I don't know if we're claiming squatters' rights, because we've been there for 20-plus years, or, or what the deal is, but, you know, I mean, it's Millersville's building, and so ultimately, when they say it's time to go, we're right back where we are, whether we spend $1 or $50,000, or I think we're at 170, or we're at 75,000 at the moment for this $25,000 project that was previously presented to the, the commission. So I, I think, not trying to kick the can down the road, but I do think out of just prudence and, you know, just, just being responsible, we need to fully understand the issue before we just start throwing money at it. So that's, that's the, a little more color behind the, the deferral. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I pushed my button to get in my own queue, because there were so many false things being said, I wanted to talk to some of them, so I had to wait in line. But the General Operations Committee fully understands the problem. We've been dealing with this for a long time, we've been hammering this out. We have a unanimously-approved MOU from General Operations. We did the work. Couple of us even visited one of their city commission meetings and talked with them. A relationship was made and continued. We took the MOU that was coming from General Operations, where I took the MOU. We could have presented it tonight for debate and possible amendments through this body, but instead, I reached out with it to a city commissioner, the same city commissioner that wrote that email today, and I ran these amendments by him. We worked together on this. You're not gonna get better of a working together than the ideas that I have presented here tonight. This is what we have. I would just beg of you to listen to all the amendments, vote them up or down, and then at the end of my presentation, if you want to vote to defer it at that point in time, then do it then. But you don't even know what I'm proposing. A lot of the questions could be answered with some of the other amendments, but everybody's going off on tangents and talking about the whole MOU and other issues that I'll answer in these other amendments. So if you just be patient, I could, I could get there and then make your decision at the end of my presentation, if that's okay. Please.
Commissioner Becker?
Yeah, on, on the issue or the topic of deferring, I, I did talk to one of the commissioners last week, Jesse Powell. I don't know Mr. Powell, first time I ever talked to him, but he answered a lot of my questions and so forth, and, and he, he did say, yes, that in the next one or two years, they're going to use these, the rooms we're talking about for their full-time firefighters. You know, and just as info, they, they did tonight vote to a, to approve $50,000 to, to fix this. So they've already done that tonight while we've been talking. So to me, I understand and I appreciate the work that the previous commissioner just mentioned, and I'm interested in the amendments that he has to say, but, I mean, they've approved it, they've approved $50,000 tonight to fix what we're talking about for those two rooms, and I, I think there just needs to be a little further discussions of, do we want, like, what do we, if they approved it, what do we, what are we supposed to approve, and what are we supposed to, to be spending our money on? what are we supposed to approve and what are we supposed to, to be spending our money on? In my conversations with Mr. Powell, it sort of seemed like if we want our EMS to have a presence in that, on that property after one or two years, it would be an add-on to the existing building. It wouldn't be in the rooms that we're already occupying. So to me, there's just a lot of questions that are still unknown right now, especially given the fact that they approved that funding tonight, that I am in agreement to defer this. Thanks.
Okay, Commissioner Ring.
Thank you, sir.
Any commissioner that wants to speak needs to get back in the queue and then we will, so everybody will have an opportunity to speak.
Commissioner Ring.
Thank you, sir. If Millersville has approved this MOU from their direction, any changes we make tonight, they'll have to approve. If they haven't approved it and we make these changes tonight and send it to them and they don't approve it and they want additional changes, then it's gonna be brought back to us again. My suggestion is we send it to the committee that has been referred to. And that what happened is between now and that meeting, Millersville and the county commission get together and say, this is what we both want and get it down so that we can vote on it, they can vote on it, everybody's happy. I've heard people, commissioners mentioned that, I've talked to a commissioner, I've talked to a, a commissioner. Well, Millersville has five commissioners. And so, you know, one or two here and there may not be speaking for the rest of the group. So we need to have something that is going to satisfy the Sumner County Commission and Sumner, and satisfy Millersville folks. And we can vote on it all at once. I'm in favor of the referral, please. Thank you.
Commissioner Rogers.
I was gonna call a question.
All right, question's being called. Yeah, this, this is deferment. Okay. I told Commissioner Jones to go back in the queue. We can't just stand up and raise our hand to speak. You have to go back in the queue.
Go ahead and call a question.
All right, call a question, put it on the board. Well, the vote is twelve to ten to call the question, but we do not have the thirteenth vote for that. So we will continue discussion. Commissioner Mansfield.
I, I would encourage Commissioner Jones, if you speak again, to please read all of your amendments at once and not delay so we can hear it all when you get back in the queue. Again, I'm gonna repeat, I, I mean, just cause somebody says something doesn't mean it's true, but here's what our rules say. General Operations Committee, purposes and duties, responsible for maintenance, construction, or improvement of necessary facilities. So I, I, I mean, this started out in him's committee last year and it got kicked to general operations because they found a need. General Operations was trying to solve that need forever and being stymied and stalled for no reason for something that Commissioner Klein has basically said the project really isn't gonna cost, he doesn't think it's gonna cost more than thirty thousand dollars. We did fifty thousand dollars, recommended it at the budget committee just in case. I've not heard anything about Millersville approving that. I think Commissioner Darnall said that. By the way, the, the email that I read previously was by Commissioner Darnall. So he's, it's interesting to see him change his position once he got elected versus when he was citizen, saying, hey, pass this MOU from the county, let's get, let's get it done. But then two, two months later, he changes his mind once he gets elected. I, I found that kind of rich. But I will encourage Commissioner Jones, if you're next in the queue, to please read all of your amendments and do not delay. And so we can understand what you spoke with, that it was amenable and agreeable for the situation. And I saw you shaking your head no when you mentioned what Commissioner Becker said. I do realize that they said that they, in the email that, from today, that they were gonna pass to potentially discuss it during their budget hearings, didn't mean they're, they have the money for it. They have to find the money for it. So that was part of what they, it wasn't, they just, they didn't approve fifty thousand dollars tonight. Just wanna clear that for the record. Thank you.
All right. And I'll remind us, we are back on deferral, so let's keep it narrow to that. Commissioner Cho.
So I, I was, I came here with every intent to pass this because it didn't make sense to me to defer it. And then I, I almost always vote to call a question, but I, I literally just said if I got new information, I would, I would listen to it. And I'm hearing two conflicting reports and I just would like to know the, the truth. If there anybody can cite a source on whether the city of Millersville appropriated fifty thousand dollars. Because if they did do that, I might, I, I now question whether we need to do this, right? I mean, if they're gonna pay for it, then it makes me question whether, what the purpose of the MOU is. If they're, if they're not, I, I'm happy to, in my mind, you know, three or four thousand dollars a month times twenty-four months, we're, we're out fifty, you know, thirty, forty, fifty thousand dollars no matter what. To me, that's, it's, there's no good, so we're in a spot where there's no good solution. So I'm happy to help the city of Millersville and I would like to move forward with something quickly unless they've already taken it on. So I, I don't know who has this information, but I would like to know the truth of that because it's literally gonna tell, that's gonna, it's gonna be the deciding factor for my vote.
Commissioner Jones.
So I'm glad we didn't pass that cellphone resolution a couple of years ago. The commissioner is verifying what Commissioner Becker said, that they did pass two sets, two buckets of fifty thousand dollars for station one and station two. They are going to do the repairs themselves. With that being said, I had a question for the law director, but first I wanted to clean up a few things that were said because I probably won't get the opportunity to, to speak again. We're not helping any community out. That, that was said by our budget director, maybe an error. This is not helping a community out because we've helped other communities out. We're taking care of our employees. Because a life safety issue was brought to our attention in health and emergency service, services. So we were required to do something about it in a timely manner. So we bought, we rented that trailer. I don't know why we rented a trailer knowing that we could have bought the same trailer at this point for thirty-six to forty thousand dollars. We're thirty-five thousand dollars into rent with no end in sight. I don't know why we're renting it knowing this solution was gonna take so long, but we are. But we're trying to solve this issue. That's why it was so important that we get this done tonight. This is live happening, so do we, can I ask our chairman or our law director, do we need an MOU? Because basically it was over the use and ownership of the repairs and the building and things like that. Or can we just can this for now?
Is that a question of the lawyer?
Mr. Law Director, yes.
Without objection.
Come on, okay. There is no ownership issue here. As far as the MOU, if they're doing all the work and they're funding it, I, I don't see the need for an MOU. The MOU is to set the terms on the funding and, and the work being done in relation to that funding.
Okay, thank you. And the other thing I wanted to clear up was they were passing the fifty thousand dollars to repair station one. Just so everybody knows, they prioritized that one last week or week before, whenever their last meeting was, because they wanted to go ahead and fix that up so that if we took care of station two, this is, I'm just repeating what he said, if we took care of station two and then on down the road, they were looking more like two years or plus down the road, that they wanted to renovate station two, which is the one in question here, that station one would, would be enough to accommodate our people so they wouldn't be displaced to, to a trailer again. They were doing prioritization on the one by the city hall so that they could move our people to that one and have room for their people because they had compliance issues with their own firemen. So they had to fix it all for everybody anyway. So the work was being done, it was being done right. We were doing it right through general operations. I had a lot of amendments here that we worked on together. I'm glad their commission moved this way tonight. That was a surprise probably to him and me both. But these amendments, I think, would have got this through and made it better than what came out of committee. Because when I saw what was emailed, I reached out to him to see what the hangups were. We, we nailed down the places where we were like and where we weren't. And he helped me with things that he thought would pass and I thought things would get through here. So I wish everybody would have been patient, but thank you.
Okay, we're on deferral now, whether this should be deferred. Commissioner Mansfield. Pardon. No, let's, let's go ahead, go ahead, wait just a moment, go ahead.
My question is, Mr. Chairman, where does this leave our EMS personnel? As far as, again, the whole point was to remedy this problem. You know, they showed up at the, with the county mayor a month ago to our general operations committee and surprised us and told us that the EMS would know, would not be able to return to those quarters at Bethel. And so then Commissioner Jones and I went before the city commission and had a spirited debate with them already. And then they changed their mind and said we could reoccupy the Bethel Road chambers. So the MOU, I know, I guess, I know it's partly for the renovation, but do we need any type of MOU as far as like allowing our, our personnel to be there to make sure we don't get kicked out surprised next month again? I, I think that would be prudent at this point to have something because I just don't trust the process because this has been such a cluster.
Well, in, in an answer to that, and I don't know what the attorney will say, I think we're not administrators. We're legislators of the county. And I think we'd just have to leave those workings of where they would go and what they would do up to the EMS staff and come in back to us with recommendations. Do you wanna speak to that?
That would be more of a tenancy occupancy issue where you would hammer out more like a lease in a, in a traditional sense as far as occupancy. So yeah, you, you would, if you wanted to guarantee use for a specific period of time, you would wanna negotiate something at that point in time.
Okay, we, you know, I wanna caution everyone here, I'll be here as long as you wanna be. But we've heard just about everything that needs to be heard about deferral and a whole lot may be settled by a deferral vote. And just since we've talked here in the last few minutes, we had other people jump in. But I, I think that a lot could be settled as, do we wanna defer it or not defer it? But Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to update information, their fix is going to start in July. So we're gonna be in that camper for a little while longer, it looks like anyway. But they've committed to the fix starting in July. I would just ask the original maker of the motion just to pull the MOU at this time until we, that way no deferral vote is necessary.
Well, I think I'll have to ask the maker of the motion, but I understood this to defer the whole issue back, not of, of the station two.
Of the MOU, right?
Yeah, well.
So he could just pull that?
The deferral go first, we'll have to decide on the deferral.
I'm just saying if he pulls the MOU from, just pulls.
No, we've gotta vote on the deferral. Commissioner Mansfield. All right, place of the deferral on. Commissioner Jones.
Sorry, I have a question. If we defer it, we're sending something to a committee to start talking about it again and there's nothing to talk about. That's why I'm suggesting that he just pulls the MOU and there does not need a deferral until there's action from Millersville with regards to when this gets built in July. We have, we have no action until this building is fixed to codes. So that's why I'm asking him to just pull the MOU and be done. Don't send anything back to committee, there's nothing to send.
I, I still think unless I'm overruled by the entire body, that the deferral is the issue before us if this stands. And if the entire body wants to rule against me, that's another thing. Commissioner Klein.
Technically, we should have done it a long time ago. But as soon as it was brought up, we should have addressed the deferral because the whole point of the deferral is to stop the debate.
So what would you say?
Y'all are running rogue right now, so what do you wanna do? I'd say if, if you want him to pull it, you need to vote on the deferral, get a no on the deferral and then he can withdraw it. Otherwise.
I hope everyone heard that, that if we do proceed with the vote, the, the appropriate thing would be to vote no and then proceed with whatever we wanna do. But we need, we need to go ahead at this point, okay? And then you could do the withdrawal.
We can still vote to defer this back to committee, is that?
Sure.
Okay.
Yep. Are you still wanting to speak to this, Commissioner Klein?
Mr. Chairman, and, and this may be a question for the lawyer, but perhaps who, who would, who makes the decision on where the EMS personnel live now? Since if, if Millersville has decided they're going to take care of the fix, that fix is not even gonna get started till July, then we have an issue of where do we put our people? Do we continue to rent at twenty-seven hundred and fifty dollars a month that trailer? Do we, who makes that decision? Is that a health and emergency services decision?
Eventually, the committee will make the decision, but we are not administrators. I think that we would come with, they would need to come to us with a recommendation so we'd know what direction to go.
Okay.
Commissioner Boyd.
So I'd like to speak in favor of sending this to Health and Emergency just to answer Commissioner Klein's concerns there, which are mine also, is we're just kicking this. I understand that it was discussed to buy a trailer or how to buy a trailer or what to do. But I'd hope that Health and Emergency would immediately find us an answer for how long we're gonna be in that trailer. If we wanna buy a trailer tomorrow, perhaps that might be a good answer. We can always sell it on surplus. We might lose some, but we might be in this situation for years. Perhaps we can ask Millersville if they would like our EMS service there where we provide the service, the ambulances and around-the-clock service. They might give us a plot of land. Other, other cities have accommodated our needs. But there's, there's a lot for Health and Emergency to discuss and options. But I, I would encourage them to quickly determine to buy us a trailer if we're gonna stay in it instead of kicking this down the road.
Let's not get off on too many side issues here. We're on deferral. And I think we've heard just, we've beaten this horse to death, but Commissioner Mansfield.
I'll just make a comment to what I asked the law director previously. It's my intent, I'm gonna put this on legislative because I think we need some type of agreement, a lease agreement with the city of Millersville for this space for our EMS personnel and just to guarantee us some assurances here. Also note that the county mayor has tried to push forward a plan that's gonna cost three hundred and fifty thousand to six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to build two rooms on this building. I'm not in support of that plan right now because of the fact that it's gonna be a two years before Millersville reclaims the split space and the amount of money we're, we could spend on a trailer to build that out is the same amount of money would have been to, to build this room out, but now it's, we're not having to do that evidently. So we're saving county taxpayers fifty thousand dollars from different cities, which is fine. But I, I do intend to put this on legislative for June to do some kind of a lease agreement for EMS personnel just to, going back to what Commissioner Jones said previously, this is all about taking care of our personnel and that's the whole goal here, so.
Commissioner Nguyen.
No, Mr. Chairman, I'm good. I was, I was gonna make comments, but I think everything's been said, so I'll hold.
Pardon?
We have one other person in the queue, Commissioner Rogers.
Well, I, I've chewed a hole in my tongue, I don't think I can do it any longer. I think we need to proceed with caution with this and, and truthfully, we're, could be opening Pandora's box across the county. We, I think this needs to go back to Health and Emergency Services and we need to treat this just like we did with the White House and Robertson County. Once we have an agreement amongst the parties, then it can go to legislative for an agreement. However, I think we may be on a slippery slope. However, I think we may be on a slippery slope here with what we do with one municipality. We need to ensure that we're doing it with all other municipalities across the county. Just as I said when I was chairman of Health and Emergency Services, this gentleman's agreement that we have with these city municipalities are about to run dry. At any time, unfortunately, this, this, it is what it is, as we like to say. The city mayor or fire chief could say, I don't want you in my fire hall, you need to go somewhere else. I think it would be very much so in our best interest to, to approach this with kids' hands and be able to walk this across the finish line and us not look like a bunch of clowns, I guess is a lack of better terms, as we're going across with this. Because, again, I think we're on a slippery slope. And if we don't handle it the right way, we could find ourselves in the same mess across seven or eight municipalities across the county.
All right, I'll ask the clerk to place this on the board. This is a vote to defer.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
This is deferred to the Health and Emergency Services Committee by 13 votes to none. All right. Committee, do you have anything else, Chairman? Committee on Committees?
I have no report, so I don't care to entertain what was added.
Motion and a second. What, would the person who made the motion, once again, you made the mo, who made the motion? Okay, to, for that person for the library, and a second. All right, Commissioner Shoef? Larry Hinton?
I feel like I'm talking too much here, but I'm going to say this. Pretty sure I do this almost every time we have come up on these types of folks who've come up from the floor. I want to note that I have spoken with Mr. Hinton on several occasions not to do with this. He was one of the first people who reached out to me when we first started deciding how to restructure the libraries from the centralized kind of library system to the decentralized system that we have. He's been very helpful. I would probably, I would, I would personally support him. But I, we need to send this back to the Committee on Committees. And I hope Committee on Committees would, would support this individual. But I'm going to move to refer this back to Committee on Committees. Or sorry, defer this to Committee on Committees.
All right, the motion has been made, and there is a second. And remember, when you speak to this, just strictly reasons why this should or should not be done. Commissioner Schmidt?
Again, this is not to cause World War III in the commission. But recently, I had reached out, every, every one of your commissioners were on this email asking the reason Commissioner Miller did not hold the meeting, not to corner her, not to say, I got you. I know she read it because somehow my email told me who read my question. So I know she was one of them that read it. This is all public record. Again, I'm not trying to catch anybody in anything. I just don't know why they didn't meet. I still don't know why from November and December why they didn't meet either when we've had other positions come up. So I genuinely, this is a genuine concern of mine, a question. So I can see why there's library board members being brought up from the floor when the Committee on Committees didn't meet this month, didn't meet in November and December. This is what happens when they don't meet. And again, you know, I know the other committees haven't met, but there's been reasons, you know, such as lack of quorum. I believe Commissioner Jones, and I'll commend him, I believe he said an email on Highway Commission didn't meet because it had a lack of quorum. At least I saw, you know, the effort made. I just don't see why they're not meeting. So again, I can see why they're bringing the name forth tonight to this floor for a vote.
Commissioner Teichner?
Mr. Chairman, I just have to say, it was called out on the group chain text blast, e-blast, that my name was splattered on there by my fellow commissioner. And, and he was correct, and I just wanted to clarify, just to answer the question, if there's one remaining, it was just stated, this is what happens when they don't meet. You know what happens when they do meet? They pass great candidates, and we put them down and don't let them come in here. And it wears me out, it wears the people out. I hope you vote all of us out.
I'll remind the committee, we're talking about deferral, please. Deferral, not your opinion. I'm not interested in opinions on many different things. I'm interested in your opinion on deferral. Commissioner Janon?
Thank you. I would like to address the fact that in December, I was nearly dead with pneumonia, had COVID, had flu, and I had shingles, all at the same time. That's why I didn't go. I would like to make sure he knows that. I don't think it's anybody's business why I wasn't able to go to a meeting. It's not. But when you tell me that you, you know, you're ticked off because we don't have a committee, and you have all these other committees that don't want to do it. And I know you don't, you wanted to talk about the deferral, okay? But I think it's important that we, we have set up committees in this commission.
Wait, wait just a moment, I have to interrupt you. What you're saying may be very valuable, and it may be true. But we're talking about deferral, not the committee makeup.
I'm getting to that. So they want to defer it?
Get to it very quickly.
Yeah, I agree, it should be deferred back to Committee on Committee. Because this commission is bypassing Committee on Committee over and over and over again. And it's not because we don't meet. It's just like Mr. Teichner said, or Commissioner Teichner, that when we do bring good candidates, because of political and personal reasons, you all shut it down, and they're good people. We have, we should be able to review this. I never got an email from Mr. Hinton that he wanted to be on the library board, nor did I have on Airport Authority. I mean, it's a lot of it. And it's all about politics, and it's all about political, political and personal reasons why these people are being shut down. And this isn't right. But I think it should be deferred back to Committee on Committee so we can at least discuss it in public and have people come and talk about it. There may be other people that want to be on the library board as well. So I, I motion to defer. I don't think that it should be, I think we need to follow the process that we have. That's what I'm saying.
Commissioner Lambeth? Deferral, please.
Call the question.
Call the question, okay. Place the question on the board.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
With an overwhelming 16 people, question is called, and we'll place this on the board for a vote. The question, the question was defer, yeah. Am I correct?
Yes.
But do you agree with that? That's a question, defer. Okay. All right, Madam Clerk?
Each commissioner, record your vote.
Did you get my vote?
No, sir.
So there are 13 no votes on deferral, and we'll place the name before our body.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
And Mr. Hinton is elected by 14 votes. Legislative Committee?
Resolution 2505-09 is to approve MOU of State of Tennessee relative to veteran services, and I so move.
All right, motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign.
2505-10 is to appoint Daniel Stevenson as Juvenile Magistrate.
Group and approve?
There was a motion, I seconded it.
Motion and a second to group and approve? Through five? Yeah. All right, any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign.
No.
Okay. One, anyone else voting no?
Did you say?
No.
Three nos.
Call for division.
All right, place that on the board.
Each commissioner, record your vote.
It's 13 to 7, yes.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Budget?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one, 2505-14 is approval of $1 million for a highway fund to move from the highway fund capital project for their maintenance, I so move.
Motion and a second, Commissioner Jones? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign.
Item number 2505-15 is to authorize transfer of $50,325 for the Hollis Drainage Project and the EMS seven projects, I so move.
Second.
Two through six?
Two through five is seven, nine, seven, eight, nine.
Well, let's just deal with this first. Two through five, motion to group and approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign.
Mr. Chairman, I think, given that this has been deferred, I believe that, that item number 2505-19 is, is.
That's null and void, I would think, wouldn't you, I think, Mr. Lawyer?
Group and approve, seven through 11?
It's 12, because there, 11 and 12 are two separate ones, Mr. Chairman. There's 3 million for the actual.
Through 11 or through 12?
Through, through 12.
Through 12 is the motion. Is there a second?
We have a.
All right. Motion to group and approve, seven through nine, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose light sign.
Okay, item number 2505-23, I just want to make a note here before I move to approve this. I have heard some information on this, which is somewhat new. So I would be, I believe that we should discuss it. However, I am remiss to overrule my own committee here, we did pass this. So I'm going to go ahead and move to approve 2505-23.
All right, motion to approve 2505-23.
We have a second.
Motion and a second. Commissioner Boyd, did you want to speak to that?
I'd like to make a motion to send this back to budget. We, we've had some additional information on how much time it's going to take, and we need to put some more thought into the policy.
Motion to send back to budget, motion and a second. Is anyone in the queue wanting to speak on this, sending it back to budget? Commissioner Mansfield?
I'm going to make an amendment to start all new employees as June 1st with a week holdback, and then send the rest of this back for existing employees to budget.
All right, motion and a second. Any discussion on that particular amendment?
So, Mr. Chairman, I'm, just to be clear here, I think we need to allow our finance director to speak on this because there's, there's some implications here.
Without objection.
We do need to, we do need to get a, get a time to start holdback on new employees, but we need time to reprogram the chrono system because when we do this, we're going to have two groups of employees, one with holdback and one without. So may I request that you approve to start a holdback at a time, but let financial management determine the time? Give us enough time to actually set the system up.
That's, that's his amendment. I'll modify my amendment, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
To designate, all, to start all new employees with a week holdback at such a time designated by the Financial Management Committee.
The second, okay. Motion and a second, and I'm assuming the people that are in the queue do not want to speak particularly on this. Anyone? All right, place that on the board.
Go ahead. It's amendment to start all new employees with a week holdback based on recommendation from Financial Management Committee as to which that time should start.
All right, it is on the board. Commissioner Harrison?
Financial management will meet, and then we still would have to vote to approve that. So if the original motion was to do it as of June 1st, we wouldn't be able to approve it until the June commission meeting, which will be the third Monday night. Or fourth Monday night. So we might, this is just a recommendation. Maybe we just pull the amendment, make a separate motion after this to handle it as of June 1st, because I think that would probably be appropriate. But we would still, right, but we would still have to confirm that here.
Well, no, I think he means to go ahead and say we're going to start holding back. They're just going to determine the day, so go ahead and do it when they determine.
Remove my days.
Right, I was, they're going to determine the date specifics.
Okay. I've got my question answered, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mansfield, will you clarify now?
Basically, per the law, the finance director's request, it was to, an amendment to start all new employees with a week holdback, such a time determined by the Financial Management Committee in, in agreement with the finance director. Because I originally said June the 1st to get new employees, because this is a problem. We need to quit kicking the can down the road. But give it a little bit more time, because the department had confusion or not understanding or agreement. Such a time when the Financial Management Committee meets, they can then determine a time to bring forward to the commission of when that starts for new employees and when it starts for old and current employees as well.
All right, everyone understand that. And Commissioner Boyd, you want to speak to that?
Yes, is there, I just feel like we always are kicking the can on this. And we have some outstanding items in financial management from like a decade ago that they said they'll set a time for, and they didn't. And we're still dealing with it because they said we'll set a time for it. So can I ask the finance director, do you think we could get this done by like October 1st? Could we set a future date that you think you could make, and just so we can put a date on it?
Might I request that the commission basically approve the holdback, let financial management set the date, and say the date has to be set within the next 90 days?
Thank you, that's what I want, 90 days.
That would handle all the concerns, I believe.
I'll restate my motion.
All right, let's try it a third time.
Amendment is to start all new employees with a week holdback at such a time when financial management decides within the next 90 days.
Is a second agree with that? Okay. Place that on the board, please, there's no one in the queue. And that passes unanimously. All right. Yes, we vote for the passage now. If you'll put that on the board, there's no one in queue.
Mr. Chairman, I think there may be confusion on what, what we're voting for here, just to restate, is this for deferral or is this for passage?
Main motion. Main motion.
Main motion to pass it. My, my original motion. I thought we had a def.
We're, we're now voting to defer.
Okay. That's why I asked. So we're, to, to be clear, we're voting to defer this to budget? Is that what we're devo, voting for, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Okay. With the, that amendment?
Yes.
Got it.
And that passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to adjourn.
Wait, wait just a moment. Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I made a mistake, um, when I wanted to, this is, this is fine that already passed, but I motioned to group and approve everything on legislative committee. I'm glad it did pass. But we had a resolution that I wanted to, um, have read by. Um, our chairman of legislative is recognizing, um, T-Dot, if, if he could read that, please. It already passed, but they're watching tonight. We, we let them know they were gonna get recognized, and I wanted to make sure that we read that.
All right. Uh, let's, uh, let's take time after that. We will recess, but let's go ahead with that commission.
Uh, I gotta find it in the packet, so.
I don't have it. No, this is not a good. I got it. You go ahead and read it, Tim. This is a resolution of the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners thanking the Tennessee Department of Transportation. Doing service to the citizens of Sumner County. Whereas the Tennessee Department of Transportation, T-Dot, has recently completed important drainage improvement work in the Cotton Town community near the State Route 25 Bridge, significantly enhancing road safety and infrastructure resilience. And whereas the drainage work addresses longstanding concerns of residents regarding roadway flooding and water management, reflecting T-Dot's responsiveness and commitment to public needs. And whereas the successful completion of this project has improved the quality of life for citizens in the area and demonstrated the effectiveness of coordinated state and local governments' efforts. And whereas the work performed by T-Dot in Station Camp Creek demonstrated that flooding once believed to be beyond remedy can in fact be mitigated through properly planned and permitted stream bed improvements, setting a new standard for, for flood response within the county. Whereas T-Dot consistently provides critical transportation, infrastructure, and services that support the mobility, economy, and well-being of Sumner County's residents. And whereas the Sumner County Commission wishes to express its gratitude for T-Dot's dedicated work, not only in this recent project, but across the county at large. Now therefore be it resolved by the Sumner County Board of County Commissioners, meeting in regular session this 19th day of, of May 2025, that this body formally extends its. Near the State Route 25 Bridge in Cotton Town, and for their continued service to the citizens of Sumner County. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be transmitted to the Tennessee Department of Res, of Transportation as an expression of the commission's thanks and support.
Thank you. Seeing that we've completed the agenda, you are adjourned.